Okay, welcome everyone to the meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. In accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order 2920, this will be a teleconference meeting without a physical location to help stop the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting may do so in one of the following ways. Tune into Comcast 26, AT&amp;T Universe Channel 29 on your TV. It will be streamed live and online at Cupertino.org/youtube and www.cucho.com/ webcast. Members of the public wishing to comment on an item on the agenda may do so in the following ways. Email by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 16th, it is already passed. Email comments will be forwarded to the city clerk who will read them. And email comments for public comment during the meeting to thecityclerk@ciclercautino.org. The city clerk will read the emails into the record and display any attachments on the screen for up to three minutes. Subject to my discretion to shorten the time, which I don't do. Members of the public may provide oral and public comments during the meeting. Oral public comments will be accepted during the teleconference meeting. Comments may be made during oral communication for matters not on the agenda. To address the city council, click on the link in the agenda. All of this, I don't need to read all of this, it's all actually in the agenda. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance since we are not meeting physically. And we are ready for the roll call.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Sharp.
Here. Thank you. So everyone is here. Do we have, no ceremonial matters or presentations tonight? Any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we are on to oral communications.
Mayor, I believe there's a closed session report.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct. I will read the closed session report out. This is Public Employee Performance Evaluation Government Code Section 54957. Title City Attorney. Council continued the evaluation of the city attorney begun on June 5th. No reportable action was taken. Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So we are on to oral communications. Give me one second to switch to the participant window here. Okay, participants. Okay, to the attendee window, okay. So far, we have four hands raised. The first hand raised is Connie Cunningham, welcome Connie.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I've lived here for 33 years. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I have two topics that I will address this evening if I might. The first thing, Kirsten, I did send in a handout, if you could post it on the chart there. It has an excerpt from the city council resolution. And what the excerpt states is that the city council resolution dated June 5th. The city of Cupertino demands that Black Lives Matter. It further states, it further states, excuse me, I lost lock here for a second. That the city of Cupertino will promote safety, a sense of security, and equal protection of constitutional and human rights, leading by example through equitable treatment of all city officials and, treatment of all, by city officials and departments. Shortage of housing disproportionately impacts our Black community. This is not equitable treatment. There is something you can do to take a step forward to help residents of all incomes, races, and abilities without changing one penny on your budget. You can approve the Westport Cupertino project. Cupertino can begin its new normal life post-COVID with a housing project that will take one step toward easing our housing shortage. I support the project that was approved by the Housing Commission one month ago. It will provide significant housing for 294 families with 48 below market rate houses and 27 memory care homes in an area that has access to transportation, businesses, the senior center, excuse me, schools, including the Anza College. These homes are a critical need in Cupertino. Excuse me, a gateway project at this site was envisioned in our general plan. When Westport Cupertino comes to you for review and approval, I do urge you to vote yes. And secondly, in my time, I would like to address the Regnar Creek Trail. I am an older bicyclist and pedestrian. I speak tonight in favor of it. As an older bike rider, pedestrian, and car driver, I urge the council to support this off-street trail. It will provide a safe path for older bicyclists, a nice recreational path for pedestrians, a safe route to school for 200 children. It will provide cleaner air by removing many cars from the road. Please remember that although both drivers and bicyclists do complain about each other, in a collision between the two, the driver always wins. It has been reported that bicycle and pedestrian deaths are increasing in our county. Please build this off-street recreational trail for bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you Connie.
That wasn't displaying properly on my screen. Pardon? I just wanted to apologize, that email wasn't displaying properly when I tried to share my screen.
Okay. Next, we are on to Anjali Kouser, welcome Anjali. Okay.
Good evening. I would like to take this moment, good evening Mayor Sharp, Vice Mayor Paul, and council members. My name is Anjali Kouser, and I'm the CEO for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today to share with you a program called Cupertino Together, which I believe is on the screen right now. We started this program back in April to assist our local restaurants and provide hot meals to our most vulnerable residents. With the help of Cupertino Senior Center and the West Valley Community Services, we were able to deliver over 1,000 meals. We're at a cross junction now where we need more assistance to continue this program so we can deliver the hot meals to the seniors in Cupertino. We ask that you help us spread the word so we can raise more funds and continue the distribution of the meals. The senior center staff has been incredible delivering the meals, and we have received a number of compliments from the seniors in the community who have been the recipients of these meals. We so hope that we can continue this program and ask again that if you could please help us spread the word and raise, so that we can raise more funds as we are towards the end of the funds that we had raised for the last couple of months. And I believe, I understand from the senior center staff that the senior residents of Cupertino still need our help, and I have been able to enjoy two hot meals a week that have been delivered by our senior center staff using the funds that we receive from the various sources, and we use the local restaurants to buy the meals and be delivered. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you Anjali.
Can I ask a question?
Move in.
Could I ask a question?
Go, go, ask your question.
Yeah, so Angela.
I pulled twice today already.
Hey, we have someone who needs to mute themselves. Thank you.
So how many seniors are you serving?
So we have been, we get the number from the senior, the citizen, I'm sorry, the senior center, and they've been delivering anywhere from 30 to 35 meals a day. So usually in a week, they're delivering around 70 meals.
So you mean each senior gets two meals a week or a day?
Two meals, those are the days that the, two meal is what the senior center staff has collaborated with. They have the seniors who need the meals, and so twice a week, Mondays and Wednesdays, the meals are delivered to them.
Oh, so $20 a meal isn't probably just not one meal, but a delivery that they might eat for multiple meals, right?
It $20 a day, because we.
It's a day, it's not really a meal.
It's a hot meal that we buy from a local restaurant.
Okay, because my first impression was $20 a meal seems expensive. So it's not a meal meal, it's probably like meal for a day.
They're subsidizing the restaurants is what they're doing. It's not, this is not doing low-cost meals, right? This is to help out our restaurants during COVID-19.
It's the market price?
You know, this is oral communication.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for reminding me Rod. Thank you, that's enough. Let's move on to Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
Hello, yes, good evening everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm certainly getting much better at Zoom now. Anyway, hi, this is Jennifer Griffin, and I was, I'm going to just say that I've been very, very concerned about the housing bills. I know we have a shortened season in Sacramento because of COVID and other issues, but we have to remember that these bills that were introduced in January from the normal legislative session, nobody knew COVID would be happening. But these bills are still there, working their way through the committees, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm very, very concerned, we'll start out with SB 902. I think it's still alive, it's the third iteration of SB 50 and SB, oh my God, 270, there's been like four of them. And this is the one where we're going to build triplexes on every suburban lot in the state. Oregon actually had their governor signed into law a very, very similar bill last August 8th. And they are, I think it becomes effective January 1st of next year. Portland is still having massive COVID problems, horrible COVID problems. We, this bill has to be rethought. It cannot be passed in the current condition that it's in because it's pushing high density. We can't, that has to be rethought. The other one that is just appalling is SB 899. This sets up, Senator Weiner wrote both these, who knows why. This is setting up churches to be poor neighbors by putting up four to five-story buildings on their property lines without having to tell the neighbors? Who wants to put a church or a temple or a place of worship in that type of a situation? I just think it's appalling that anyone, anyone in legislation would even allow a bill like this. I know Senator Weiner was probably asked to write this bill, but who would do something so horrible? I find it atrocious and appalling. I think we need to look very carefully at the funding for these housing bills. There's a long paper train of lots and lots of money that are asking people to write these bills. And I don't, I think the public's being left out of it. They want to leave us out, but none of those bills should be passed in the condition they're in. They were presented in January, and we have very, very severe problems right now. The bills have to be looked at. I sincerely hope that the governor will see fit to not sign these. They're just, the one about the church is just downright offensive. And I am so tired of having to spend my city, my property, my land, my state for people who are trying to take over other people's property, and it's all for big money. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Ravati Narasimhan, welcome.
Can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. So I'm going to read, I sent this out as an email, I will read it out as well. So this is, I'm sharing my family's personal story. So since the shelter in place began, our family has been taking regular walks along the trails in our neighborhood. We like the trails better than the roads because of having exclusive access for walkers and bikers without having to stop or watch for cars. In addition, having large mature trees along the path helps with the shade, especially as the days get warmer with summer. And as a bonus, we get to meet other city residents at an outdoor setting where we can socialize while maintaining distancing. And to add to what I said in the email, I just came back from such a walk for about four miles using the trails, and I'm very happy and thankful for the cities to do that. And there are two pictures that have attached with this, and these are from our routine route along the UP Trail from Rainbow Drive to Prospect. Beyond Prospect, the trail becomes paved, and it's a part of Joe's Trail that's maintained by the city of Saratoga. It'd be great if Cupertino prioritizes trails and paves with minimal investment, so the Cupertino portion of the trail can be as steady and well-paved as the Saratoga part. And I've shown both pictures just so we can contrast and see those as examples. You can see the shade, you can see the path. And I didn't want to get people on the trail, so I made sure that I didn't get people, but you can see a few walkers in one of the pictures. And routinely be done into at least four to five families who are either walking or biking within a mile's distance, right? Second, as a community in the city council, we've spent hours and hours doing workshops, walks, one-on-one meetings, and not to mention the Marathon nine-hour meeting, Mass. September, to finalize the one trail we had agreed unanimously as a council to fund. This is the Regnar Creek Trail. I was just another city resident at that long meeting, and you heard from students, seniors, several community supporters about the trail, and that helped you make that informed decision that you unanimously made. Can we please stick to it and continue funding and building it? The reopening of a closed decision to rediscover the budget asks would be a disservice to the community and all of us who came together to support that effort. If you plan to do that, you will need a strong justification on why and if and why you choose to do so. Please prioritize the jails, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jim Moore, welcome Jim. I'm not seeing Jim, hold on, let me, let's see, participants. I'll unmute you again, let's see. You may also have to unmute yourself Jim. All right, there you go, welcome, you have three minutes.
Okay. My first, my first topic was easements. I wanted to go ahead and remind you that the last time that the residents heard about the easements at Velco was last December on the 17th during a Cupertino council meeting. We just heard again this morning, so it is almost six months to the day. What I wanted to do now was ask Kirsten to run the short video clip on the 1217, 2019 meeting that we spoke to.
Can't hear it.
You have to stop the share, reshare, and check a box in the window that you select as the same place where you select where the video is in order to get the audio to turn on.
I'm going to stop, reset the timer until that. Kirsten, can you do that?
Negation now. The quote. No. Thing is, for any project, this does not apply for any specific project.
Yeah, now we're hearing it, but don't see the video. You have to.
Make sure. Easement involved in that project.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having trouble finding it now.
Or if it needs to be changed, it has to be changed and record the new easement.
Seems to be stuck in my.
Kirsten, we can skip it, it was a request by another resident, not by me.
Okay, I'm going to have to log out, I can't get it to stop.
Setting new agenda items or at the end?
Okay, am I back online?
Yes, we can hear you Jim.
Okay, that was just what you did receive via an email. It was the two-and-a-half-minute clip from the 1217 of 2019 meeting where Ignatius and Kitty and I spoke about wanting to know what the status was on the easements at Velco. And at that time, we wanted to know about the Loop Road easement and also the bridge over North Wolf Road. And the latest, from a standpoint of our understanding, was that someone at least had told us that the Loop Road easement had been vacated. So more recently, the question was from the residents, and I ended up sending six emails to the city attorney and also to the city council asking whether that had been vacated or not. And this morning, we did get a response. Again, it's been six months since we had heard anything about those easements that we were concerned about. And I'd like to thank the city manager and the city attorney for providing us some information on those. One, we learned in this email that the Loop Road easement, Western East Loop Roads, they have not been vacated. We also learned that as far as easements, that there's another law, the MAP law that can go ahead and remove those from being the city's property. That was in addition to what we understood was the state highway law. And we also learned, and let me look at my notes here. We learned some case references that we can go and research to better understand what's happening there. And we also learned that the SB 35 lawsuit that was filed by the Friends of Better Cupertino, that it actually supposedly said something about the maps. Let me get this right again. The tentative maps, that those were approved by the judge in the SB 35 lawsuit. And none of the residents have been able to see that and find that. And so we were requesting a page number to help direct us to the order where that was actually approved by the judge. Again, we're appreciative of getting some news on the easements and better understanding what the situation is. We're still concerned about the North Wolf Road Bridge because it was there to connect the two sides of the mall. And of course, the mall is no longer there. And so we don't, as a resident at least, we don't see a need to even have that easement continue. And we're wondering whether that can be removed or vacated or whatever that process is to remove that from the public road. That's all I have to say about easements. I'm also going to talk about the homeless encampments. And my wife Susan is on, and she's going to cede three minutes to me if that's allowed.
All right, sure, go ahead.
Okay, you should have received my remarks as far as, mainly it's a timeline of what's taken place in the last two weeks. The residents became concerned, a lot of us who are sheltering in place weren't over to North Wolf Road. Residents became concerned when the Mercury News published an article saying that there were homeless encampments there, and the city had declined to go ahead and help them. And that was Monday, June 1st. I saw that, made a visit, took photos, and then communicated with our city manager as far as saying there seemed to be adequate space and access to put facilities there as far as porta-potties and hand washing station, and of course, trash pickup. You should receive that entire list as far as the timeline. Where we are right now, from a resident standpoint, is that we're very pleased that the smaller encampment, which is near the Hamptons, has received a porta potty, has received a hand washing station. In fact, there's two stations in each one of those units, and is getting, as the other one is, the trash pickup. Their porta potty and hand washing station is adjacent. It's probably within 25 feet of the tents that are housing those people. The other encampment, which is a larger one, which is estimated to hold about 30 people, that one has a porta potty that was set up initially 275 feet away, and the residents were concerned, as were the homeless people that I talked to on Thursday evening, they said they wouldn't use it, they wouldn't walk 550 feet round trip to make use of those facilities. And I can see that myself, and I can certainly see that for a hand washing station. Who's going to walk 550 feet, go ahead and wash their hands? What transpired this week is that the city manager has managed to get that moved 80 feet closer. It's now 195 feet one way, 390 feet round trip. It's definitely closer, but not by much. And I haven't visited the homeless encampment to see if that one satisfies their requirement as far as walking over there. But my own common sense says that at night, that's not going to get used by those people. And anybody that's going to walk that distance to wash their hands is probably close to zero.
All right, please finish up, we're way over time.
Okay, we're not accomplishing what was set out to be a solution for the homeless. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Manager, do you want to explain why it's the port?
This is oral, can we not take this at the right time?
Yeah, I can provide it during my COVID update.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Next, Mooney, welcome Mooney. Mooney, where are you?
Could you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I had to unmute five times. Thank you for patience. Yeah, so good evening Mayor and the city council and the manager. I saw a post on Facebook where you guys are setting up a session between the sheriff's department and the community. I really appreciate it and thank you for doing it because it's very important, especially you know, given the sensitive situation that exists today. My apologies on the noise, I'm biking, you know, near Stanford on foot. So I really appreciate, you know, for you guys, you know, taking that initiative to bring sheriff's department and the community together to have all questions answered and whatnot. Because whatever happens somewhere else, no, I mean, there are things going on, but then people try to equate everything as same. So we need to show that, you know, we are working together, and it's all like we are all in it together. So I really appreciate what you're doing, thank you.
Sorry, welcome Catherine. I'm allowing you to talk.
Hi, good evening Mayor. I'm following up on what Jim Moore was talking about. And I was wondering regarding the Loop Road easements, what money did the city receive for vacating those easements? And I'm concerned, the word takings comes to mind. I'm concerned if perhaps in assuming that staff can essentially vacate those easements by having a staff rather than a city council approval of the tentative map? And then the way it works with the final map is essentially you're rubber stamping the tentative map if it's compliant with what you had already approved. So I'm concerned about this. Also, in their plan set, they offer, the applicant offered an alternative should the city not find it was in their interest to vacate those easements? And I'm wondering how, you know, you're squaring that circle. And I'm wondering how, you know, you're squaring that circle that they were supposed to provide some other plan. And I did read over the judge's decision, and it's around page 52. I don't clearly see where she's saying that the subdivision map act is precluded by SB 35. And, you know, I do understand that they're saying if you approve a tentative map and it has the easement changes in it, that you are essentially meeting the requirements of the street and highways code for vacating those easements. You know, I understand that. I'm a little concerned about all the other easements, which also happen to be on that plan. You have multiple utility easements, which also got altered. And, you know, is SB 35 assuming that they can take all of those easement vacations as well? And then the issue also is that, you know, easements, bottom line, they're money. And so staff, if we don't have a way that we can receive money for this, it looks like they just gave something that we owned, the community owned, away for free. And given that it took a judge to discuss it and make a decision about it, I feel that city staff really overstepped their bounds. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. And last, we have Emma Sheeran, welcome, Emma. I will try to unmute you again. But I think you'll also have to unmute yourself. Emma? I keep unmuting you, but it doesn't. Okay. Emma, are you there?
Hi, I wanted to bring to the attention of... Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have.
Sorry, what?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I can hear you.
Hi.
Hello?
Emma, speak.
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead. All right, I don't know what happened to Emma. We can hear her, but she's not speaking. All right, she's gone. Maybe she'll sign back in. Meanwhile, welcome, Thomas Burns.
Oh, great, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Dr. Tom Burns. I live across the street at 102081 Torrey Avenue, right across from the library. And I've been the president of our homeowners association since 2008. And when we were notified by Verizon about the tower that was supposed to go up, adjacent to the library, right across the street from our residence, I was asked to circulate a petition among our residents about possibly moving that antenna, because we are a little bit afraid of cumulative effects of the radio frequency emissions over time. As you know, the library is visited daily when it's open by a lot of small children and their parents. And certainly, our residents share their concern that being exposed to this radiation on a regular basis could be harmful to our health. So we had submitted, one of my neighbors I gave the petition to is named Mr. Steve Shea. And I believe he gave the petition signatures to Mr. Willey a few, couple of weeks ago. And so you should have that on your record. Let me just say that the majority of our residents signed the petition, and we're asking that you consider moving the location of the antenna to a non-residential area closer to Rodriguez Avenue, if possible, or maybe even up to Deans Boulevard, if possible. I've noticed in my driving around town that there are quite a few of these antennas located along Deans Boulevard. So I am not an expert in radio frequency emissions, but, you know, with the antenna in the tree, in the fake tree behind city council chambers, and this new one closer to our residence, we are a little concerned about the long-term effects. And so we weren't sure if this issue was gonna be discussed at a city council meeting in the upcoming future. So I wanted to get it on record that our residents at Sterling Square Community would be in favor of moving it further away from residential area. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did Emma Sheeran come back? I don't see her. Emma, are you around? Okay, well, that is...
Mayor, I do have an email to read.
Oh, okay, sure, go ahead.
This is from Jay Wong. Dear there, we ask for leniency as we can't breathe. I actually pulled upper muscle, which the breathing needs to use re-injured again. Contractor and our family did indeed to get the consent with names after the little buildup torn down, that one followed county code was a county territory not long ago, misled by the agent. Nobody wanted to go through this again. Unfortunately, nightmare, tragic, heartbreaking, money loss, harrowing, excruciating thing happened again. Please turn to, please be lenient. We cannot breathe. We are not asking to defund the police department here. To defunct, other ones, actually residents do not like. We are trying to work with city attorney departments, except that household with elder and young resident is harder to have voice. Thanks, Wong family. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We are on, oh wait, yeah, Emma is back. So Emma, welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
We do.
Excellent, I apologize. There was a time delay in my connection, so I didn't hear you acknowledge me until 45 seconds after I was speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
Explains what happened. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the parks, which had previously been closed, for example, the basketball courts were caution taped off. Because the caution tape, which was put up several weeks ago, has now fallen down. People are once again using the basketball courts. I have pictures from over the past few days of groups of many teenagers, seven, eight, all playing basketball on these courts. Recently, the CDC established that sports, including contact like basketball, are among the highest risky activities that can take place outside. I urge you to recommend to staff that the caution tape be put back up on these basketball courts to prevent this from happening and for the safety of our whole community. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So Madam City Manager, can you have whichever department's responsible public works look into that?
Done.
Okay. All right, seeing no more oral hands, we will move on to reports by council and staff. First, Deb will give her COVID-19 response effort update. And remember to include the explanation of why the encampment facilities are put where they are.
Sure, okay. So there's been no change to the order from the county, and they are kind, they're going on a three-week basis now. They were going every 14 days. But I think now they're watching to see what effect there may be from the recent Black Lives Matter movement protests and other openings to see what effect that may have. So we won't have an update maybe till next week to the county order. In Cupertino, however, we are with social distancing requirements and face coverings, doing a couple of things that are mapping from the last order, which is we are starting our summer camps next week. One on June 22nd for four weeks, and another one July 20th through August 14th. So I think that's good news. This will be both virtual and in person. And of course, the in-person ones will be 12 people at a time and not mixing with other groups of kids. We also opened all restrooms at all the parks this week, because people are out and about. And of course, we have the proper signage and, which is sometimes what takes the time is getting the protocols in place so we can open these things. I'm happy to report that, of course, as per our press release and a number of updates in our COVID-19 update, we have testing at Creekside Park, COVID testing, from June 14th today through Thursday, June 16th. It is a mobile center, so it is driven. It will come back if we have enough demand, and I think we do. Because today, the first day, was 468 tests were administered between 10 and 4 o'clock today.
Wow, very good.
Yes, and we have to hit about 900 to 1,000 by the third day, and I think we're well on our way. It doesn't surprise me, actually. So it's well attended. We have a great partnership with Valley Medical, who are the clinicians at Creekside that are administering the tests. We have cert volunteer 17, I'm sorry, 17 citizen core volunteers helping to staff, and of course, support from our Parks and Rec staff and our public work staff. We have water, the county has water out there, so it's really well done. As a reminder, this is a mobile unit, so it is based on the numbers tested, and it will return if there's high demand. And the community members seem to appreciate it. I've gotten a lot of feedback, both by phone call and a couple of emails. So people seem to appreciate that it's close.
Can I ask a question about this? So I'm excited to get tested. My other family members have. Is there a particular time of day that is when the service is less in demand? And who's funding this?
So it's the county, and they are working through Valley Medical. They have been somewhat dissatisfied with Kaiser's response, so they went with Valley Medical. And today is not a good indicator, Rod, because I can't tell you when a good time to go is. I would go right at 10, but I'd go before 10 and get in line. Because there are lines, there was a line all day today. It didn't matter what hour it was.
So they close at 4:00, so if I want to be tested...
Get there at 3:30.
We have to be there, what, an hour earlier?
Yeah, 45 minutes to an up to 30 minutes earlier.
That long a wait?
Yes.
And if we have enough demand, you're saying this could be extended immediately? Or be extended in some future time, or what?
What we're told, extended some future time. What we're told is they'll go through the three days, and then they'll go to another site. There's two other testing sites right now, three others. But one's in San Jose, one's in Palo Alto, and one's in Mountain View, all concurrent. And then they'll kind of rotate and come back if we have a high demand. I don't think it's gonna be consecutive weeks, because that's kind of what they didn't say, so.
Got it. Hey, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate our getting this going.
Yeah, great press for our new emergency response manager, Tom Chin, for arranging all of it.
One more question on that?
Sure.
So, you know, testing that many people, that's great. Will you, will Cupertino know how many tested positive? Will that information be available?
You will get, you won't, we won't get that information. What you will get is, you could, if you had someone test positive or several people test positive, it will add to our overall total, which is sitting at 29 for the last approximately three weeks.
So that's Cupertino?
Cupertino's is 29 right now, which is really, really good for a city our size. I will brag a little bit, because in juxtaposition to a city that is of similar population, Palo Alto is in the, I think it's in the mid 70s. Well, no, it's about three times, so it's maybe in the 60s. So we're doing okay.
Yeah, so the other question is, in Semidians Weekly Update, you know, they're working to get the tracing, I think it's called, and contacts that the people have had with other ones. Are we aware of that for the ones that test positive in our community? They're still trying to get that set up, but are we staying on top of that?
So there's nothing really to stay on top of. The county did put a call out to all cities for volunteers to actually help with the tracing. Someone can be trained to do the tracing. And so the last count I had is, of course, a lot of cities were pushing back because we need our city employees right now, and they're all working. So we don't have really anybody not working. So we forwarded a list of, I believe, 17 cert volunteers to the contact tracing effort. And then they don't really trace Cupertino cases. What they do is they go to the whole staff that is part of the tracing. So that gets done. I'm not aware that they're gonna be providing us, the city, any information.
I think it would be good, if at all possible, to let the community know as more and more tracing gets done, to what level, you know, it's ramping up, whatever it is. Because I think that then goes a ways to give people confidence that the overall picture is being handled, you know. Okay, we do find some people that have it, and then we're trying to find out who they were in contact with so that we get as many of the people identified as possible to limit the spread. That's the crucial key, limit the spread.
Yeah, unfortunately, the city is not going to, you know, we don't have any, we don't have any play in there. So the county will be reporting all of that information on their dashboard, the results of that on their dashboard. That's actually quite good. And so you should be able to see it there, not only for Cupertino, but the entire county. And you can hover over it by city to get the statistics.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
Continue.
Sorry, one question from a resident who asks, is this test viral or antibody test?
It's viral. No antibody, no antibody testing. Yeah. And it's a nasal swab.
Right.
Yeah, and I actually saw recruiting advertisement for paid contact tracing. So aren't they paying the contact tracers?
No, not in our county.
No.
With us here, okay.
No.
All right, continue.
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, Deb, finish.
Yeah, sorry. Looking into, we are looking into additional cooling centers in city facilities, because the heat is coming tomorrow, be quite warm. And at first, we were looking at Quinlan, but we're gonna have a lot of the camps operating out of there. So we're identifying other areas and then setting up the safety protocol so we can have people into the cooling center. On, we're also working with the Red Cross to identify a site for blood donations in the city. And then let me talk about the homeless encampment real quick. Let's see. How do I share my screen? Share. And then, hopefully, I'm gonna be able to do this. Where is the document? Well, I have a map. Let's see. New share. Oh, here. Can everybody see that?
Yep, well, it's kind of small, but...
It is small, sorry about that. So the previous location for the porta potties and the hand washing facility that Mr. Moore was talking of was located on the previous location square that you can see there. And the reason it was sited there before was because there's a big vehicle that the vendor uses to service these porta potties and hand washing stations. It takes about 15 to 20 minutes for them to service. So this location, actually, if you can tell, is you're able to take the vehicle out of Belena traffic and service the thing, and then move on. We have moved it to the new location here, which is 80 feet towards the encampment. And basically, what's happened is just I decided to just adopt a higher risk level. So there, the previous location, we thought was low risk, because you could take the entire servicing vehicle out of traffic. Here, the servicing vehicle will have to come down this Loop Road, kind of go in and come down this Loop Road. And if anybody's familiar, this is the Loop Road that kind of feeds out of Benihana's and the parking lot that used to be JCPenney's. And then you're, when you come out, you're kind of forced to go right towards the off-ramp, the on-ramp, sorry, to South 280. So the servicing vehicle will be parked here in the roadway for about 15 or 20 minutes to service that. And so we're just gonna have to watch that other vehicles aren't coming by there. And so we're just going to have to watch that other vehicles aren't coming by there. So I just decided that it was, it is a higher risk, but not that much higher. And that was as close as we could get it. If we decided to place it on the other side, it just gets too close to roadways. And if we put it, you know, somewhere down the ways, a little bit closer to the encampment, the vehicle actually has to be on Wolf Road in a lane of traffic in order to service it. So that's where it's going to be. I apologize, we couldn't get any closer, but that's where it is. That's the explanation. I will tell you that, I'm sorry, my attention, he talked about it being delayed for nine days or so. You know, my attention was on protests and COVID planning and facilitating small businesses. And so I just apologized for me not paying too close of attention at the moment to get it done more quickly. We do have trash and debris pickup twice a week. It gets picked up and dropped off on Friday, and picked up and dropped off on Monday, and we have heard, although not directly, that the encampment members are very appreciative of that. So that's that, and Recology is doing that with us. And then the porta potties and handwashing stations have been established and were relocated this morning per the map that I just showed you. During this last shelter, this shelter in place also was the Black Lives Matter protest. I want to say that Cupertino's went extremely well. It was well thought of, out and planned, so hats off to the organizers. And at the peak, there was an estimated nine hundred people participating. With regard to the follow-on actions from that, I have reviewed the financial portion of our contract with the sheriff. And the policy review will continue this week. The sheriff's office has already published the eight can't wait framework for use of force. And we will be publishing that on our webpage. That's going to be completely devoted to the Black Lives Matter movement, Cupertino solidarity, which will go live tomorrow. And that's where we'll post all of our relevant documents. And then one member of the public, I believe it was Mooney, mentioned that we're having a public forum. We thought it might be more open for public interaction rather than a council meeting on June twenty-second with Captain Urina of the Sheriff's Department. I will be moderating, and we will hopefully get a lot of public engagement for that event. And it's just one of several things that we're putting into place on implicit bias and some other things. I also want to give hats off to the sheriff as kind of pre-discussions with the organizer. They decided not to engage as to give this space for the protesters to be heard. So that's the end of my report.
All right, Leon, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
So how often do they need to serve the porta party?
About once a week. Yeah, and it might be more frequent. It depends on, we're just kind of trying to figure out how often. So right now, it's once a week. We'll see if that works. If it's more often, we may have to do it more often.
So could, are we providing them maybe urinals, things that they can do it and they carry over, then at least they have somewhere to dump now?
That was not, that's not something that we have.
Obviously, can we suggest to the county to provide this kind of thing?
I don't, sure, I mean, there are urinals in the porta potty.
Yeah, but I mean, then they can do it at their camp, and then now they have a place they can dump. During the night, they can use it, right?
Sure. That's a really hard question, Leon, that I'm happy to.
And there are actually also camping, things that people use for camping temporarily, and then now they have a place they can dump it after. Just wondering, there are ways to help solve the distance problem, at least when they have the urge, then.
We will take that under advisement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Okay.
So are you also doing the review for use of force policies?
Oh, yes, that's what I'm doing this weekend.
Okay.
Okay, Rod.
Yeah, so you referenced eight can wait. Has the sheriff adopted all eight measures or how many of the eight?
I believe that he has. He's done a summary right up on the eight can't wait that we can get out to people. I can't, I'm not equipped to comment on it right here.
Okay, yeah, I think this is certainly of keen interest to be answered. I appreciate the city putting a forum on on the twenty-second. I'm hoping that we'll have good engagement and, you know, people will be able to ask these questions, and Captain Urina will be prepared to answer. Is there a reason that Lori would not attend?
Um, well.
As the sheriff for the county?
Well, so we thought about that, and maybe if we didn't consider it, maybe that's my fault. Since Captain Urina, you know, is subject to those policies, whatever policies there are, the thought was that because he is captain of the West Valley Services that are, that's ours, along with Saratoga and Los Altos, that he would be the best person to talk to everybody about it.
Has the sheriff, as the person we elect and the chief law enforcement officer in the county, been accessible and been available to answer these questions countywide? I mean, just seems to me like it'd be appropriate that the sheriff stand up and talk to some of this. So that's my input. I'll let you do with it what you want to. I'm happy to see Captain Urina. But frankly, you know, the person that sets policies countywide is, would be to me the most important person to hear from.
I hear you.
Thank you, but appreciate you getting it set up. I think, you know, it's time to engage and have all those, all that energy. We had, what, nearly a thousand people? Have people have a chance to ask those questions in a calm setting and and hear directly from law enforcement on what they're up to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have some more questions. So some residents have emailed, and they are proposing to remove school resource officers from schools. I am not sure, so are you going to also look at that? What functions they have been serving the schools? I assume they should have positive impact on schools, but there has been a call to remove them. I think we need to take a look at what things they do.
Sure.
Yeah.
The only part that I have, the only part that I have completed is the review of, I'll call it the financials, our costs. And it does include two part-time SROs for the schools. So I'm certainly, in my next steps, going to be looking at that as well.
Yeah, and also I hope to understand who actually sets police policies. Is it the sheriff? That's elected or the county board of supervisors? And that's something in the future I hope we can figure out. And this has been a great report. Would this, there anything be written that's available for the public?
On what, my COVID reports?
A lot of this, yeah, a lot of good information.
Well, certainly, we're going to be posting all of the resulting documentation to our Cupertino solidarity website. I'll go live tomorrow, and you'll see the organization.
You're not providing, how often are you providing COVID update now in writing?
In writing?
Yeah, so right now, there is no, not weekly update.
Well, the one you get an update, you get an update twice a week now from the city, right? And then, and all this stuff is in it.
So there is the twice-a-week COVID update.
Yeah, and it's all documented and captured on the COVID website. And then what I do is I end up saying stuff in the council meeting that's usually forward-looking, that's going to happen soon.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Deb?
I hope so.
Okay, so now we are on only item two.
Mr. Mayor, we have one comment, one public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A public comment.
Oh, okay, this is written or someone raising their hand?
Jennifer Griffin has her hand raised.
Okay, sorry. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you there. Yes, you can't see my hand, but I did raise it. And I, you know, I wasn't sure if the public could comment on this portion.
Oh, yes.
The city manager was reporting. Yes, I'm just going to make a comment about the SROs. We need to proceed cautiously with that. I have sat through many, many, many of the meetings for many years. And the SROs, I mean, I remember the last time that the SROs are actually funded by two separate, I think the schools and the city. And I think there's two officers attached to the high schools. And this is from, the last time they looked at it was probably four years ago. And it comes up maybe every three to four years. I mean, we're going back to two thousand. But I, I think we need to proceed cautiously with the SROs because they provide a tremendous resource. My brother that passed was a social worker with at-risk youth in Modesto. My sister-in-law is a high school counselor that deals with students that are of high risk, et cetera. And they both have commented that the SROs are very, very vital, especially in Modesto. My brother used to have to go to court with his clients that were oftentimes juveniles that were from the county. And I cannot say again that we, I believe that the SROs are something that we need to look at very cautiously. We need to keep them because they are specially trained to work with young people in the high schools, they get to know them. Your other, if you pull those officers out and you have to bring in officers again, they will probably be regular officers from the beach. They may not be specially trained to deal with young people and their issues. So we need, I would be very, very concerned about ejecting this. I actually saw this. I was concerned when people were talking about defunding the SROs in other cities. We need to look at who is actually working with our youth in the high schools. And I think, I really, I think the SROs are just extremely valuable. They're not just cops that are running around in the high school. We had that when I was in high school, because there were riots in Stanford Berkeley. But the SROs are the ones that are there listening to the young people, and they need to be brought in to talk about what they do. But it is highly recommended that you keep those types of people in the schools. And if you're not familiar with the high schools in Modesto, they are extremely places where they need to have SROs and lots of young people that need to be listened to. So I'm just passing that along. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Warren.
To respond a little bit, the reason I brought this up is today, I was listening to the Fremont Union High School Board meeting. There were multiple, a lot, I think ten maybe, of Montavista alumni who are requesting the school union to remove SRO. They are hoping they will be replaced by a psychologist. And yes, I do think SRO provides the very first positive experience for kids to have with police. So we.
I think we're going into the weeds here.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Something not agenda, so.
Right, this can be discussed at the town hall as well. So can we go on to the other residents? Lisa? Lisa, can you unmute yourself? I cannot unmute you.
Oh, I did, but.
There you go. Okay, we hear you.
Okay, so I had sent Deb an email earlier, just, I just want to let Rod and whoever else know. I did go to the Creekside testing site today. I was there at nine forty-five, and there were about fifty people ahead of me. And it, I asked the woman, you know, what's the expected timeframe per person? Once they get into the room, it's about a five-minute process, so it's just getting them into the room, and it depends on how many nurses and how many people inputting your information. That seemed to be the backlog, the people inputting your information. But I was out of there by eleven-ten, so fifty minutes, not including the fifteen minutes before it opened. And when I left, the line was all the way out to Miller. So I would suggest going early and just expecting to wait, especially since it's going to be hotter than the rest of the week when they're there.
And so, so again, just, I was, want to make sure I heard you correctly. You got there at what time and what time were you done?
I got there at nine forty-five and it was done at eleven-ten.
Wow.
Wow, okay.
It's about five minutes per person once you get into the building, is what they told me. But it's not, it wasn't bad, but today wasn't as hot as it's going to be. So I would suggest you go early and just expect to wait an hour.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, and then comments from about the SROs. I do think that that needs to be, maybe this isn't an appropriate time because it was brought up. I do think those are people that need to be considered, as someone mentioned there. I would look at it this way. There are students on campus that may feel safer with them being there. And there are staff that are grateful to have them. And they are trained specifically for that. Maybe the training should change and be bumped up a bit, but I would really consider that also. That's it.
Okay, and next we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, mayor, council, and staff. One, I wanted to say thank you for the manager update. I really look forward to it. And after COVID, it would be nice if it was just a regular thing. You wouldn't have to say anything if nothing was up, but it's a nice touch. As far as COVID testing, I was wondering if the homeless have access? Is, would it be possible to set aside a time, maybe get, find out how many need to take it, and maybe use a via shuttle to take them all, have them tested, and bring them back? They don't have an address, so there would have to be some way of getting the information to them. Anyway, that's my thought, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. Let me see if anyone else raised their hand in the meantime. Okay. Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments on this?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we can move on to the report on committee assignments. Rod?
Well, thank you very much. We had a very exciting meeting yesterday. And spent a lot of time preparing for this.
Which agency?
So I'm sorry, this is the VTA SR eighty-five policy advisory board. You know that in twenty fifteen, we negotiated, in twenty sixteen, we negotiated money for transit in the eighty-five corridor, as well as great separations in cities to the north, Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale. So we all banded together, and that's the only way we could effectively have any leverage against, okay, San Jose that, you know, typically likes to fund their projects to the near exclusion of ours. But we pulled that coalition back together. There are some new members and so forth. This is, this corridor has been the subject of litigation by the cities of Cupertino, Sunnyvale, and Los Gatos, when they attempted to just turn these things into a transit, a lane for cars, a toll lane that would have effectively funneled traffic south of Cupertino with an extra lane into northbound, into one less lane. And of course, what that would do is just cause a lot of, even more congestion on our surface streets. So we successfully fought that off temporarily. And this policy advisory board was created to find a transit alternative. The alternative that uh consensus is building around and, and that was established yesterday was what the staff calls Alternative Three Two. And what that would do is to create a lane um, dedicated for transit um, in the median, south of Cupertino and then uh, there's more work to do to get it up to Mountain View. But that would give us a full transit lane. And uh, with that, the um the diamond lane would then turn into an express lane. So that has been the general idea of the members for the last couple of years. Um, VTA expressed great skepticism about the ability of our corridor to support transit. Never mind that the lanes are chock-a-block full in regular times and never mind all the housing that's gonna be built in all of our cities over the next few years, but particularly in San Jose, which has so much land in the Albedin Valley. You know, they, today they have four or five hundred thousand people. Uh, and they need to get to work and teachers and service workers do too. And they don't have the luxury of taking a bus. So we've, uh, this alternative includes I think it's five specific stations where people could be picked up and dropped off and keep the bus on its way. There's been some question about whether we need some, uh, and most of us, I think, feel that that would be important. Um, we've, in order to get the, our work done this year in a recommendation to the board before frankly, all of the Measure B twenty sixteen money gets allocated for other things. Uh, we've asked for a meeting in July and August and then we'd like to have a recommendation go to the board uh, this fall. So, uh, stay tuned. We had twenty-five members of the public speak up. Uh, so, you know, climate action, uh, spokespeople. All the comments we got were, were very positive and encouraging uh, of our efforts. So that's, that's that one. Um, we also, um we also, I, I can also report out on um uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. We had a board meeting. And the big, one of the big items there was, uh, we approved a contract for solar plus storage in the Central Valley. This is eighty megawatts and represents, will represent once built about six point si- six percent of our, our, of our electricity load. So it's a, it's our biggest uh, single contract uh, so far. And I'll leave it there unless there are questions. Oh, I, I, I need to say one more thing. Uh, our staff, our public work staff did a phenomenal job in organizing other cities. We got a letter together uh, that included Cupertino and three other cities showing uh solidarity and basically saying to VTA staff, not so fast. We deserve transit too. That, you know, th- th- there's longer uh, message and lots of nuances between the cities. But we stood together with Mountain View and two other cities uh, to, to get that letter out the door. And we think over time we can bring more in to really stand together and to tell VTA that they just can't take our money for others, other, other things or just push us out to, you know, the, the last decade of a thirty-year measure. So I'm, I'm grateful to Cupertino staff and I'm grateful for all the public speakers from around the region, San Jose, Sunnyvale, Cupertino, that all uh, that all weighed in to help uh, support this effort. Chris Correa did a great job. Roger Lee's been working on this, so, and Deb uh, along with her peer, uh, city managers signed this letter. So I'm, I'm very thankful.
Okay, is that it? Whoops, am I muted? Okay, who would like to go next? Uh, John, do you have anything?
So, uh, my committee assignments didn't have meetings uh, this week. But being the uh, alternate on both, both the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability uh, Authority and also the Route eighty-five, so since I was the alternate, I attended both those meetings. And they were both very productive, so I'll leave it.
Okay, uh, um, Liang Chao.
Um, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, Darcy.
Yeah, hey, um, so, yes, as John mentioned, uh, the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority met on uh, June third and uh, John's the alternate. I am the designated uh, on that board. And uh, for those of uh, us who aren't familiar with it, it is a series of radio towers that we're putting up in the South Bay to uh, help with our emergency uh, communication systems. And I'm very happy to report that uh, the, the system is essentially up at this point. And they are right on the verge of uh, finishing it out. Uh, one of the things that um, was discussed over at the meeting on the third was to have a uh, brief five to seven minute synopsis on video uh, with regard to what the Regional Interoperability Authority is, what it does, what kind of progress it's made. Um, it's, it's a fairly streamlined board and um, it's making really well-needed infrastructure that's already being used uh, at this point. Um, and then uh, the significant administrative uh, issue that is um, being um, be, being ushered through right now is the fact that the executive director, Denise Sellers is, uh, is retiring. Uh, she uh, is retiring the second time, uh, because she came out of retirement to see through the SVRIA and its initial infrastructure. So we are currently uh, conducting a search for the uh, replacement uh, for Denise. Uh, on June twelfth, and I will try to uh, share my, my screen here uh, as part of my duties as uh, Cupertino's designated for the Policy Advisory Committee of uh, the Valley Transit Authority. Uh, I, I'm actually the vice chair this year of um, that um, of, of the PAC as they call it. Um, we, we had a really significant um, event uh, with regard to transportation in the South Bay and in the greater area. Um, and that was the uh, opening of a couple of new BART stations. One was in Milpitas and one was in Berriessa. And so all the, I have to start to share my screen now uh, to show you some uh, information here. So this is a, a picture of a system map that I took a while at one of the ribbon cuttings. They had one in each of Berriessa as well as Milpitas. And I don't know if you can see my cursor, but I'm circling the two stations that we opened up um, on the bottom right-hand corner of this image. They were in Milpitas and Berriessa. And if you can see the, the gray area uh, of this, um, from Millbrae down on the peninsula and then heading over east towards downtown San Jose, but coming well north of us uh, is essentially Caltrain. Um, y- you see that the BART system itself doesn't have the completion of the circuit uh, that's been, you know, talked about for over a generation now. Uh, the very bottom of this gray here, you know, which is where you would think it would kind of affect us um, is, is, is north. Um, it's basically the Caltrain stations uh, at Lawrence Station as well as in uh, in, in Mountain View. So um, as you can see, the, the transit uh, that we're looking at uh, in our general area does not really connect to us at all in West Valley. Uh, which is why I was really happy to work with uh, with Rod when he was talking about uh, his efforts along the eighty-five with regard to a, a letter that he was putting together, or I should say staff was putting together to try to get a joint uh, amount of jurisdictions to um, you know, say, look, you know, Measure B has three hundred and fifty million dollars for transit along the eighty-five. Uh, eighty-five basically goes on the left-hand side of this loop. Um, and basically if we just give up the median for uh, for cars, uh, then we don't become a part this, or transit system um, that we hope to be able to deliver uh, in the future for future generations, certainly. Um, but on to more, 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 more uh, things with, with levity, I guess. Uh, going on to this next um, item, see if I can try to move over the image here. Uh, give me one moment. And, oh, here we go. So Berriessa Station um, is in North San Jose. And uh, you can see the ribbon cutting ceremony here. There are social distancing. In the foreground, that's actually Ken Jaeger. Um, and I don't think you can probably see him too clearly, but right underneath the Berriessa uh, North San Jose Station uh, sign, I believe that is uh, Mayor Ricardo from San Jose. Um, and then um, thi- this is an interesting uh, shot, I think, of the outside structure of the station itself. Um, and it is a, a hub to connect both BART as well as the VTA systems. And so this is a ribbon cutting that was joint between VTA and BART. Uh, we took the uh, inaugural train to Milpitas and then um, we had another ribbon cutting ceremony. Milpitas Station inside is, is very beautiful. It's well-lit. Um, I highly recommend that you, you head over there at some point um, when social distancing will, will allow for it. Um, and, and just check out the transit station. Uh, similar to the other one, it is a connector between VTA as well as BART. That's Nuria Fernandez, the general manager of uh, of VTA, helping to ribbon cut. And uh, in the foreground here, I was actually, you know, socially distanced and seated behind uh, former Mayor Ron Gonzalez of San Jose. And uh, taking a picture of Nuria, off in the corner was the person I'm seeing the event, which is County Board of Supervisor Cindy Chavez. So um, that is my update from the VTA PAC. The VTA PAC itself didn't actually uh, meet this past month. And I think it's probably because we are scheduled, or we're scheduled to meet on Thursday. And this ribbon cutting, as you can imagine, was a very significant uh, event. It, it was on Friday. So we'll meet again uh, next month. And hopefully we'll be able to, you know, um, keep the ball rolling on, on helping to deliver some meaningful transportation solutions in South Bay.
Okay, you done? Alright, I will go next then. Um, last week on Thursday uh, we had the A-BAG General Assembly, virtually of course. It was quite controversial, the most discussion I've ever seen at one of these general assemblies. And there were a lot of very upset people. Uh, the issue was the budget. And while cities throughout the state are busy figuring out how they will survive on less money, that was not the case for A-BAG, which is raising the dues for all cities up to twenty percent. Um, the budget did pass with the dues increase, but there was significant dissension. Um, it was felt that, you know, they are not taking the whole recession and loss of revenue that cities are experiencing seriously. I, I wanna say twenty percent is not a lot of money. It's a few thousand dollars, but it's really the spirit of the thing that we all should be in this together and trying to uh, reduce expenses whenever possible. However, the budget did pass. Um, that was really the only item. People did speak about things like housing as usual. Uh, later that day was the Cities Association. We did pass a Black Lives Matter resolution. Um, it passed almost unanimously. Uh, one city voted against it, Mil- Milpitas. Um, for vi- not because they disagreed with it, but they had other reasons. Uh, we heard a pretty impassioned plea by the male of, mayor of Gilroy, Rich Constantine, who is black. And, you know, I have to say he was upset with the rest of the cities for not doing more. Um, but to be honest, I, I would like to do more. I don't know what more small cities can do right now. You know, we are, um, you know, rotated mayors. Um, we don't have the issues that cities like Oakland and um Minneapolis and Santa Monica have. So I'm looking forward to a, a broader conversation on this and what beyond signing resolutions and making statements which are just pieces of paper, what we can do to move forward with this. And I think our forum next Monday is a start uh, in this whole process.
So Stephen, he's actually the mayor of uh, of, of Morgan Hill.
Oh, Morgan Hill, not
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And yes, he along with, with uh, he's black along, as is Nasa Phil Klieger, right, who was there?
Yeah.
And Chappie, the three of them, I think, had a lot of um, relevant information and experience.
Yeah, I mean, it's hot, you know, to be honest, it's really, I mean, we can't pretend to understand what what they've gone through in their lives. It would be wrong to say, you know, that we understand because, because we really don't. Um, but hopefully we can do more than just um, pass resolutions. Uh, cuz I think the times demand it. Um, then we moved on to the Legislative uh, Committee. Um, we took positions, we didn't get through all the housing bills. We took positions uh, to oppose almost all of them because, you know, to be honest, they are being put forward by um uh, I don't know how to say it, but the one we, the one we all agreed that was a good bill was Jim Bell's SB seven ninety-five which is the follow-on to SB five, which Governor Newsom vetoed last year. So this would provide significant amount of money for um, housing, workforce development. Um, kind of mini bringing back redevelopment, but not quite. So, you know, that will probably have the same fate as SB five. It will pass the uh, Senate and then move on to the Assembly and probably the governor will veto it again just because it actually requires money from the state. Now, last year they had the money for SB five and he vetoed it. This year, given the budget situation, it would be unlikely he would sign SB seven ninety-five. We did not get through all the bills. We're gonna continue it in the next meeting. Um, I can't remember. We voted to oppose all but one and the other one we didn't take a position on. And Rod, did you stay for that meeting? I can't remember which was the one we didn't take a position on. It may have been um
No, I, I, I usually tune in uh, as an alternate, but I um I, I would, I did, I missed that part. I was
Yeah, I apologize. I, I have to go back and watch the video over again um, to see which bill we didn't take a position on. But, yeah, it's pretty clear that these bills, you know, most of them remove local control, they will worsen traffic. Um, most of them don't address housing affordability. It's more um, for market rate housing, which um you know, we, the developers are not even, you know, we, it's hard to get them to build anything basically right now. Um, so we will see what happens with these bills. Um, we're having our legislative meeting in Cupertino on Friday where we would discuss these, take positions on the ones we already have not taken positions on. And you're all invited to tune into that exciting meeting on Friday.
Um, so A question on Cities Association.
Sure.
Will the Cities Association consider writing a letter to ask a delay of existing housing element implementation and the, the, the next one because of COVID nineteen, because of rent drops, because of people actually moving out? So if the developers don't build, how can they hold the city council be accountable for units being permitted by the plant?
Yeah, well, that's been the case.
Would the Cities Association consider writing such a letter?
Um, you know, I can bring that up at the next meeting. You know, frankly, even before COVID nineteen, it was clear that um we make RENA allocations as do other cities and then the units, you know, in many cases are approved, like the Hamptons and Marina, and then they're just not built.
Yeah, but right now, we, if they don't propose, we can't even approve.
Right, but I think, you know, as we've talked about before, the reason they will move forward is not because they expect cities to build the RENA allocations, but because when it becomes clear they're not being built, then SB thirty-five kicks in with lower and lower requirements for below-market rate housing. And that is really the goal of the property owners to get those number of units down. You know, obviously building fifty percent or a hundred percent affordable is not, you know, what a property owner is interested in doing. So I agree with you. Um, if, if the RENA stuff was because they were giving realistic numbers and expected them to be built, that would be a different story, but, you know, I think we all know.
But then it's that they will, they will streamline for any development with only ten percent of the.
Right, they could streamline for ten, yeah, with ten percent. And I think that is the ultimate goal.
Our requirement.
Yep. Okay, so that's all I have. I think, oh wait, let me see if there's anybody speaking on this item. Attendees, wait, I see. Um.
Connie Cunningham.
Oh, okay, why don't? I see her there. Oh, there we go. Okay, welcome Connie.
Oh, good evening. Hi. Um, I was very interested in the conversation that you were having about what can, uh, smaller cities do? And, uh, one thing that I've heard, um, um, and I think probably could help us is if we could do something with our general plan. That doesn't require funding so much, but what I understand is that some, some builders believe they could, um, build more or make proposals for multifamily units if, uh, they could go a little bit higher. Like on the, uh, one for the Veranda, the, um, the builder was asked why she didn't go higher at the time. And she said, because the city, um, wasn't encouraging it that at the time. So I, I'm just left with the impression that perhaps we do have some, some controls in that area.
Okay.
So actually I was just reading a blog. There was a bill passed last year that allow a hundred percent affordable housing to put as many units as they want in a project. And then with density bonus, they can add thirty-five and now probably a limited height already. So there is already a bill for a hundred percent affordable housing.
Was that fourteen eighty-three? I can't remember.
And just a reminder, this is a report on committee assignments.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Um, thank you for reminding us to keep on track. Um, we are on to the consent calendar. Let's see if anyone, does anybody want to pull anything on consent? Okay, hearing no one. Can we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, how about a second?
I'll second.
Great. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to the second reading of ordinances. Uh, this is municipal code amendment to Cupertino Municipal Code Section two point two zero dot zero one zero, record keeping duties, closed sessions of chapter two point two zero, city clerk to title to administration and personnel to clarify limited access to closed session minutes. Um, so can we conduct the second reading?
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number two zero dash two two zero five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code section two point two zero point zero one zero, record keeping duties, closed sessions of chapter two point two zero, city clerk to title to administration personnel to clarify limited access to closed session minutes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if there are no public comments, then I would like to move that ordinance number twenty dash two two oh five be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Okay, second. Let's have a vote, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that ordinance number twenty dash two two zero five be enacted.
Great, I'll second.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. We are on to public hearings. Um, what could be more exciting than weeds is brush abatement. So this is the brush abatement program hearing to consider objections to proposed removal of brush and order abatement of the public nuisance and potential fire hazard pursuant to Cupertino Municipal Code Section sixteen point four zero dot three two zero regarding defensible space brush and resolution number two zero dash zero four four. So can we have the, um, staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a brief presentation that I will attempt to share and I will try and go through it quickly. Okay, let me just play this. Okay. So, uh, just a brief overview of the weed abatement program, the wild.
Brush abatement, not weed abatement.
I'm sorry. Brush abatement program, the wild and urban interface wooey fires are growing, a growing community problem. Wildfires occur in the vicinity of Cupertino and present a danger to people and properties within the city. Santa Clara County Fire Department has the authority and the responsibility to manage the program, um, to ensure life safety and protection of property. And city code requires homeowners to maintain a defensible space by removing, uh, flammable, uh, fuels such as brush. Uh, the wooey area defined is the wildland urban intermix with homes, um, scattered among wildland fuels. Uh, Cupertino's wooey area includes primarily the western portions of the city and homes within the foothills of the Santa Cruz Mountains. Uh, so this is just a photo of the variety of fuels and varied topography in Cupertino. Water availability is a concern in, uh, areas higher in the foothills. And, uh, gated areas and dead-end private roads create an access for emergency responders. Um, homeowner responsibilities include maintaining a defensible space of zones from their property that include ten, thirty-foot and one hundred feet zones. If the homeowner, homeowner is, uh, unable to meet those safety standards, then they have a couple of options. One, the homeowner completes the required work on their own, or two, the city authorizes a contractor to complete the work for them and the charges will appear on their next property bill. And the inspection schedule began in, on February twenty-eighth, where letters were mailed to all Cupertino property owners. And April first, county fire began conducting their inspections. Uh, June first, reinspection occurs of any non-compliant properties. And beginning May first, all the way up until today's hearing, notices will continue to, or continue to be mailed to non-compliant property owners. And county fire continued to work with those, um, owners for compliance. Um, so today's recommended action is to conduct the brush abatement program hearing. Note objections of any property, property owners that are on the list, um, of being non-compliant and having to remove the brush and adopt the resolution ordering the abatement of public nuisance and potential fire hazards, including brush. And that is all, Mr. Mayor and Council. And we also have, um, senior fire department, Senior Deputy Fire Marshal Curtis Rule is available to answer any questions.
Did we have any written objections to, uh?
I mean, I don't. We do not, but we have one speaker.
I do see, I do see one speaker there. Um, okay, we'll go to the, um, speaker first. Um, hold on, let me go to that screen. Welcome Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say that the procedures used in this program are so much clearer than the corresponding county weed abatement program. Notifying the owners with a letter and a door hanger, listing specifically what's the issue and giving them an opportunity to resolve it are three things that are not present in the county weed abatement program, unfortunately. I want to encourage the city council and the staff, if you ever have the opportunity to provide improvement suggestions to the county, I would love for you guys to do that. For the benefit of everyone in Cupertino, thank you.
All right, thank you Peggy. Um, I don't see anyone else that wishes to speak. Um, okay, so let's see. You just need us to, um, adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion by council?
Um, do we have a county person here?
Yes, we have Senior Deputy Fire Marshal.
Yeah, if you want to ask any questions, go ahead.
So, I think that, uh, Peggy raised a good point, so I would like, I would like to know our, uh, bait, uh, abatement, brush abatement and the weed abatement, are they run by two different departments? And are the policies both set by the county supervisors or why are they implemented differently? Do they, do you know?
I can briefly answer that. The weed abatement is managed by the county, um, agricultural department. It's a separate, is a separate program and fire, um, I'll let Curtis speak to the brush program, um, that they manage with the city. Uh, Curtis, could you raise your hand, please? A star nine or use the raise hand feature?
Are you able to hear me? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Well, my apologies, Curtis, Santa Clara County Fire. Uh, I can speak to the, uh, uh, brush abatement program. Our emphasis, of course, is fire safety. Uh, we have some additional requirements, including screening of fireplace chimneys, uh, address posting, and sometimes it becomes an educational program for our residents where we're able to discuss other issues outside of this traditional, uh, weed abatement program, other fire department related issues. Um, I did want to bring up, um, one minor point for council and the city manager that one property can be removed from the list. And that is one one six eight zero, Regnar Canyon Drive. One one six eight zero, Regnar Canyon Drive, uh, is compliant and does not need to be moved forward on the list, uh, as part of tonight's reading.
Okay.
So why, what, why was it added in the first place? And why, how did you find out that it should be removed? Just trying to understand the process.
Uh, the process is very dynamic and we make every effort to re-inspect properties at a fairly high frequency towards the end of the season so that we can avoid putting people on this list. And occasionally we will get a homeowner or someone we've been unable to get a hold of who will at the last minute suddenly be able to get things done and resolved and compliant on their own, which is our goal. And so then we keep them on the list until they're not, and if we're able to verify that they are now in compliance, we take them off the list. So this one was on until the very last minute.
Oh, so you'll make frequent, multiple visits as long as they become compliant before our meeting today, you take them off?
That's correct.
That's very different from the weed abatement, because weed abatement was kind of assuming you, even if you are compliant now, you might not be compliant in the next three years.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for a more friendly, um, present friendly program. It seems you focus more on education. That's, I think, more important. Thank you.
I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion if you're ready.
Great, thank you.
I, I had one question. So we just heard about one property. Uh, how many more properties are currently in violation?
At least two. Count, but there's two, that's correct. If you look, uh, at your, uh,
Right, it's in the report.
I believe item D in your report, you'll see two addresses that are still present on that list. Uh, so a total of two would be the answer to, uh, your question.
Okay, so then by tonight approving it, then you'll proceed to do the brush abatement for the other house? By the property?
Two.
N- no, what will happen is that this list will then, uh, assuming it's adopted and goes through the appropriate process here with council, the list will then move into the weed abatement program for actual assessment, again, another inspection, and then potential ordering of abatement, actual work to be done on the property, and then subsequently added into the tax rolls.
And so that work would be done by the weed abatement program that Councilman Chow was referring to?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Rod, did you have?
Yeah, I would, I would move that we, um, uh, acknowledging that we've conducted the brush abatement program hearing to note objections of property owners having their name on the list of properties that have been non-compliant and moving and removing brush and finding that we have two remaining on the list. To adopt resolution number twenty dash zero eight three, ordering abatement of public nuisance and potential fire hazard pursuant to Cupertino Municipal Code Section sixteen dot forty dot three two O regarding defensible space brush and resolution number twenty dash zero four four.
All right, I'll second.
But that needs to be corrected to reflect one rather than two.
Correct. No, no, three to two.
Two rather than three. There, there's one off the list and I, I noted that in, in the motion.
Yes.
And I will get corrected list from, um, the county and I'll attach that to the sign.
All right, so I second it. Can you con- conduct the roll call, please?
It's the first, first of the three that is now off the list.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Scharf.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, um, so number twenty-one is going to be very long, so let's take a five-minute break now and come back at about eight thirty-eight uh, and continue this one, because that, this may take hours.
Thanks for the break.
Five minutes.